Now, masks at your table are not a requirement, it's a gift. And so, we hope that you wear orange fountain mask wherever you go, particularly during the gym hall where there are hundreds of people on there. So, it's really just a promotional gift. You know, if you're comfortable taking your mask off, I think probably most of us, I've been vaccinated and feel comfortable and try to space it out enough. So, feel free to take your mask off if you want to. If you're not comfortable, that's no big deal either. But, welcome to the University of Texas Permian Basin. We're excited to host this entire group to have a typical casual discussion about the sports fields. So, I wanted to start, and so, I want to talk a little bit about the agenda. It's really pretty casual. I'm going to start with just a little bit of context about the university and the fields, just the facts, and just a proposal that the university has on the table, draft proposal, and I'm going to talk about that just a little bit so we can have all of the details or the main deals or provisions here in a Q and A, in an editing queue. So, feel free to look at them, not going to read them, just kind of go over that. And then, we'll give the mayor the opportunity to have a few words and talk a little bit. And then, we really just want to hear from you in the same speaking session. We'll start with the associations and give you an opportunity to share the, anything that you would like to share with us about your work as an association, about fields, about your thoughts about the proposal on the table, anything that you would like to share and we are excited to hear and read about that. And then, we will go around and let each council member have a turn to say whatever that you would like to say in the discussion. And then, after that, it really just is a roundtable discussion. We want to talk together, have an opportunity to go through what we've heard, if there are questions that we can answer, we walk many of those. Today is not a day to make any decisions. There's no action on the table. This is not an action item. It really is a discussion item about what has to happen. So, let me just start with a few facts. For the last 25 years, the University of Texas Permian Basin has been in partnership with the city on this sports fields. About 25 years ago, the city invested millions of dollars in this sports complex for these fields. And every single year since then, the university has provided funding to make sure that the grass is cut and the lights are on and they've supported the fields and the work on the fields. The university has not been an active partner in that other than the fact that the 93 acres that we own has been provided for this purpose. Now, I'd like to start by saying that the university feels very strongly that having an opportunity for youth sports on that property, we think is a valuable part of our strategic initiative. We think that the sports fields, the opportunity for sports is something that connects with what we want to do with the university and is part of our strategic plan. There are a lot of things that we can do with those 93 acres. You know, they are, those 93 acres are very valuable real estate, but we believe strongly that the service that the university can provide for the community in the sports is something that we're committed to. So, I want to say that at first. We would like to find an agreement long-term where the local youth sports have the priority on those fields and they are able to participate in a way that not only maintains the participation, but increases the participation on those fields fully. We want that to be even stronger. So, we're for that and we want to find a way to do it. The university will have to go to the board of regents to get approval for any new long-term agreement. And that will take us a while to negotiate with all kinds of requirements on there. We've got to make sure that we can meet those requirements. There's a lot, it's a lot different today than it was 25 years ago. So, we don't know what the agreement will have to look like for us to get approval. And of course, it's a partnership with the city. And the city will have to determine what kind of agreement is in more best interest for what you want to prioritize over the next 25 years. So, we believe that we need to have a one-year transition period that will allow the university to work with the city and the associations to come up with a way that everyone can win using the university property. Again, we prioritize the local sports, we're working with the associations. We would like to make sure that you have even more support than you have now to do what you're doing. We also do believe that part of the mission of the institution and certainly part of the mission of the city is economic development, making sure that we bring, that we are able to bring economic opportunity to the city. So, the tournaments are a way that we can maximize the value of those fields that brings in lodging packs that allows the city to recruit their investment. And we hope potentially to make additional investments in the field so that fields can even be better for the use of those fields. And the revenue that is generated from the tournaments then provides an avenue to make sure that the associations can continue to do their work on those fields without interruption. And that is causal. That sports revenue is going to be very important for those reasons. So, we want to make sure that we have the revenue to keep it up. And secondly, to make sure that we have the ability to contribute to the economic opportunity. I agree with the mayor. We've had several conversations that, you know, they call it heads in beds, but it is really an important opportunity for us to have sports tourism as a way to diversify our economy. When the oil prices come down, we still need people to take in the hotels. We need the businesses, you know, to be thriving as well. This is a counter cyclical, you know, not counter cyclical, but this is a way to have a growing tourism that will allow us to benefit the entire city. Now, again, I want to reiterate, I think I share the priority with the city that the local sports is the priority. We believe, the university believes, that with professional central support from the athletic department here at the institution, that we will be able to work with all parties to balance those appropriately. That we can work on the scheduling, you know, the concessions, all the things that will be necessary for the associations and also the tournaments to be successful. So, really, we just want to make sure that we have an opportunity tonight to hear everyone out and to reiterate the fact that the university is interested in working with the associations in the city to make this whole thing a win-win proposition for everyone. And we believe strongly that we have the ability to add that to what's going on on those fields in partnership with the city and in partnership with the associations. So, I'm going to end there, mayor, and give you an opportunity to say whatever you'd like, and then we'll go around the table.
Well, thank you. Thank you, I want to thank you, I want to thank the university for hosting this and to be able to, everybody be able to sit down with the associations and the staff and the university to be able to go forward and have a discussion. This primary has been put together, we want to hear from the associations. You're going to have the bulk of the time is all dedicated to you. Please leave nothing asked, think out of the box. No questions going to be said, we want, we want it all to be there. We want to hear it all. Concerns, vision, issues, I'm just, just all of it. And so, real quickly, 25 years ago, I was part of this process of starting, you know, the investment into UTPB. The vision then was to grow the local sport because our street, strategic area, our location, and our weather. We put some investment and remember, I mean, during that time, 25 years, we were in the same economic situation we are now. And so, we always, you know, the vision back then is that we needed to be that sports attraction because of our location. Now, we can sit here, we can spend the rest of the evening debating whether that can become fruition or not, but that isn't the point today. The point today is what we're dealing with today. Contract, is that a point where we're going to continue? We knew we had, you know, when we started this, at one point this was going to happen. Never mind dreams, I think I'll just be here to begin and end. So, saying that, I want to thank the council for being here. I know they've been working on it. There's been a lot of conversations. The one thing, the conversation I haven't had is, other than I had 25 years ago, is associations, so many pieces have changed. And so, but, I'm going to ask the council again, any state questions you want to say?
You want to ask the council first?
Yeah, I want to make your thoughts go over, if anybody has anything you want to add.
Yeah, well, let's go real one, then I think that, in there.
Mayor. District one. Come out there.
Um, no, I do, I'm very glad that we're having this roundtable discussion because I think there's just been a lot of miscommunication, maybe just some, but it's just great to have all the organizations here to, so we can all get, get on the same page and answer all the questions that people have. There's so many questions, I know, that each organization has. First question that we as a council have too, and so, just to have this forum to be able to sit down and discuss it, which is about the very important. I do have one question I wanted to just ask, just because this isn't really going to, I think, answer this specific part of the sports industry. Would y'all be opposed to, like, the sports, privately funded sports fields coming in? That's going to house volleyball and basketball. Because right now, there's really nothing for those, for those that are in there, for those sports.
Well, I think, you know, we have to find a way to, if we're going to become a sports tourism destination, and I certainly do believe that we should. You know, the university is on board with that. You know, we already have plans for an arena. We're working on a way to fund that arena right now that would provide a space for our own volleyball and basketball, but also an arena for the community. That arena would be available for volleyball and, you know, all of those kinds of things. But I, but I do think that the more venues that there are out there, you know, the better they are. I would respectfully say that when it comes to the sports fields that are already here, you know, both the university and the city has invested millions of dollars and millions of dollars of value in those. And if there's a way for us to utilize those in a way that allows the local sports participation to be prioritized, but also to be able to bring in revenue that can build those other kinds of facilities and improve the facilities that we have, then, you know, we all do win. I mean, you know, the ability for this to be a game-changing economic opportunity for Odessa is a real thing. And we want to be part of that. We want to be part of making sure that this city grows in a way that the businesses thrive, hotels thrive, and that we have the quality of life that is available there. So, I don't know the specifics of what you're talking about. The university, we're big ten. We want to collaborate wherever we can to make a difference. And so, we certainly want to have that conversation to the extent that it's relevant to us.
Okay.
Thank you, mayor. My common comment is, I love that you put the previous contract, which obviously is 25 years old, it's not hard to see that. But the problem that, the problem that I see with the whole thing, and I think what, while we precipitated this meeting happening inside the contract is, is some events that happened that probably didn't need to happen. And what I see wrong with the contract and what needs to happen going forward is that it needs to be some accountability. The city is the one that typically is, is providing all the big funding, name seven, the maintenance and so forth. And there's, there's no real, according to the, to the old contract, it was, it was supposed to be under the purview of, Steve, you're not going to like this because it says your name. Steve, I don't know, the parks department in the city. And he's supposed to exercise an annual report and he's supposed to feel all controversy, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, over the years, I think it's dropped through the cracks. And that happens with long-term standing agreements. My, my whole purpose in seeing this thing go forward is that, is that the tourism and the hotel beds that these outside, number one, needs to benefit our local organizations, number one. Outside of that, these outside organizations, the currents that come in, our hotel beds, under typical rule, are the lowest occupancy here in the weekends. I think the last number that I saw was by, it's usually, you know, it was like 60% unoccupied in the weekends. And these softball, volleyball, whatever, soccer, whatever we bring in, help fellows bed, help hotels out tremendously, which funds the city's ability to be able to pay for some of the fields. Problem with the whole agreement that I see it, the problem that I think we have to address is the accountability issue. Somebody needs to be in charge of it. Somebody needs to be in charge of looking at the events and making sure the schedule works. The city, we now have a huge investment over on Merce, on the west side of town, over Floyd Wynn. And I went and looked at it yesterday, just on Sunday, because I really hadn't been over there at all. Well, I grew up a few blocks down, but I was six, you know, a few years ago. So, it's, while the building hasn't changed, the rest of it has a little bit. So, I'm very proud of the way that I went and looked at all the fields. And then, I didn't, I guess what I didn't realize is that we've got three fields that can park down on the interstate that are basically being renewed. So, so, part of the, part of my vision would be for whoever manages, if it's the, if it's the university, that lake department, I think it's a wonderful place for that to be housed, was the accountability that we get our fields on outside events leased as well.
Absolutely.
And, and, and again, that's, that's revenue for the city that we're not getting now. They're great fields, Steve and Megan hangs all the same. The ones that are, can't even, just like the ones in Sherwood and Floyd Wynn. And then, even though they're not getting used that much. So, that's my goal, is to be able to see this thing go forward, to be able to accommodate all the associations and do what they need to do. What we can't do is the city can't afford to miss a million-dollar event for whatever reason. Somebody drops something through the cracks and nobody's accounted for. You know, there's got to be accountability as far as I'm concerned for the city. Because we got all the revenue to stay. We have all the expenses to stay. That's where I am.
Well, and to your point, I do appreciate that because, you know, you've had some conversations with the mayor and others about the possibility that the university athletics could centrally coordinate all of the fields. And we're open to doing that because I think that's what it takes. It's really just a way to make sure that you have a central support system, as you said, to be able to manage the scheduling and, you know, to work with, to work with all of the players to make sure that everybody gets what they need. And, you know, a very important part of this is, you know, Discover Odessa. You know, Discover Odessa is the promoter and the, you know, the recruiter. What the university is talking about is becoming the managing operator. The city handles all of the grounds and the maintenance of the grounds. It's a perfect plan for those three entities that partner which are really making this a reality, so that...
Yeah, and I agree, I agree 100%. It's a, it's set up, it's a good deposit set up because there's other functions that can happen as well, Discover Odessa, a big part of this whole thing, so. That's my two cents for it.
All right, I'm going to add a third sense.
I'm good. I mean, I was wanting to...
Thank you to the association reps that have, because it's been very important to me to hear from you guys because my priority is for our recreational leagues. You know, I fully support select teams. I mean, Mark has great information on, on some of that. And yes, I agree on the tourism issue of it. But for me, as a representative for district three in the city of Odessa, it's the recreational leagues that I'm most interested in. I do not want anything to happen that is going to cross the average family out of being able to send, or let their kids play. Whether it's softball, it could be soccer, you know, this, it doesn't necessarily fall in the football, basketball, you know, what, football's over. I don't want those kids getting crossed out. And so, that's one of the things that I'm very interested in and also very concerned with on some of the proposals that I've heard, which everything's just been through the grapevine, I think. And so, you know, this is an opportunity. But I'm really hoping that you speak up and you speak your concerns and ask your questions on this because we cannot cross our, our kids out of being able to participate in sports.
And we agree with that. I mean, I think the access needs to be on those local districts. They shouldn't have any different situation than they have now, is what they do. That's part of the value of having the tournament, is that it allows the ability for league to get higher and greater because that's going to be required for the city to produce investment. That is the way that we make sure that the activity priority is on the board. But I agree with you there.
Thank you.
Well, coming after everyone except for Mara, I have to agree with Deirdre. I mean, my, my whole focus as that large council is you hear from the different entities one-on-one that we've never gotten an opportunity as a whole to hear you guys and be on the same page. So, by the time it gets to me, sometimes it may be a third or fourth party and you're just trying to make the best decision. And so, I also agree with Mr. Fumpson that we do need some kind of accountability, you know, because we hear one association is in charge and then we hear that, oh no, it's the city's fault because we didn't get the tournament here. And so, we want to make everybody happy. We want heads in beds, we want tournaments, we want people to come to our city and eat at our restaurants. And so, we, we want, I want as a council to be able to come as a common ground and make what's best for the citizens of Odessa. And like Ms. White said, not cross out our students because we want every child to be able to have the opportunity to play sports. And I'm a, I'm a parent all over again with a grandson at seven. And I just think we do need some accountability and maybe relook at the contracts moving forward. And please be open, don't hesitate. I mean, this is, this is where you need to ask questions, get your answers. I mean, very rarely are you going to have all of us in the same room at the same time. So, make sure and ask your questions and voice your concerns so that we can move forward and help everybody.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so now, let's do, I'm waiting for her.
I thought you were here for...
She deferred.
I was trying, you know, I'm kind of where I have to follow. Everybody's at their place. But I'm thankful for the opportunity for all of us to be at the same table because as the other chef said, I've heard so many different things, so many different times and so many different ways. And I speak from sports mom. My daughters were recreational players, they were league players, they were select players. One went on to be a player, a scholarship player for WTA Youth. And so, I ran the whole gamut. And so, I'm very, very pro sports, so let that, let that be for the record. But I'm also very pro Odessa, very pro UTPB, I'm going to go now. But I think it's important, as Dr. said, that it's a win-win as, as much as possible for everybody. You know, we're going to have to work together, we're going to have to give, we're going to have to take. But my heart, again, and I have to agree with Deirdre, is the kiddos who can't afford to do some of the bigger things, you know. My heart is for the kiddos who are on the west side and the south side possibly, throughout Odessa, but predominantly there, who need that sports. They need sports to be a part of their life for a number of reasons. You know, for the same reasons that some of our kids are, you know, for identifying or feeling good about themselves or knowing that they too have a place and a spot in Odessa to be able to showcase whatever their talent is, you know, whatever sport it is. I don't want any kid to feel that they didn't have an opportunity because they simply could not afford it. That, that in itself is a deal breaker for me if it ever gets to that point. Because I, I've seen those kids, I've mentored those kids, I go to church with some kids, mine probably have been those kids, you know, if you want to put that. But it's important to me that every, if, if we're going to promote sports, that we're going to promote it for all kids. It's, it's, that's very, very important. And so, speak up, this is your time. I agree with Denise that you may not legally be able to have us in a room together again, so this is your opportunity to speak up. I think we're mature enough to be able to hear it all, good, bad, and otherwise, and walk away and still work together and make things happen for the best of the city of Odessa.
Thank you, we'll say it. So, let's start with the Odessa Girls Softball Association.
I don't even know where to start. We directly feel the effects of UTPB because we share a field with them. It's not nice and it's not easy. It's, I don't know, you probably want to say some more because she's directly dealt with. The athletic director, the coach, she knows a lot more than I do. But it's been perfectly, I mean, perfectly clear that current situation, we're secondary to UTPB, if you ask the coach. We don't really get options. She tells us when she plays, we try to tell her we play. Mine were helping hot. We don't even have a ring on bases. And the last year, we've gone through four sets of bases on the one field that we share with them. Basically, it's expensive and we're paying for it because there was an agreement that they got put up, you know, might have got put up, they said they'd been up, we can't refine them, and so, we're... It's, it's rough, I don't get it, rough. It's rough field-wise, it's rough scheduling, and we really don't... We've tried to get UTPB to do clinics for our girls, to help our girls, to benefit the rec girls who've... There are currently girls playing on the UTPB softball team that started at OJSA. I guess they don't remember that when we asked them for help. We can get OC softball to come in and help, but we can't get UTPB softball help. So, it's kind of rough for us. So, it's a real sore for us because we directly share the field with them currently. It's not really, you know, it's...
So, it would run a tournament that, that you would want to put on, would the association be responsible for doing those or would it be... So, you know, we don't really have all of those things played out yet. The value of the transition here is to work on MOUs with each one of the associations and to determine how we're going to handle the tournaments. Most likely, you're going to need a central coordinator to handle the scheduling of the tournaments and working the tournaments. That most likely under our proposal will be the Fountain Athletic Department. But we would build the capacity to be able to make sure that we can manage all of that. And then prioritize the time and the space of the MOUs for the local leagues and participation in that. Scott, did you get to add any thoughts?
No, I think that's spot on. I think that the vision here would be that we would work with the leagues and develop that plan. And then, we would supply the game operation, the manpower, and make sure that everybody's running on time and all of those pieces of it.
Can I ask a quick, ask a quick question? Sorry, let me ask one quick question. Can you be a little more specific? How, how old is your league, your, your season girls and the age groups?
We run two. Okay, our age groups come from four years old to 18 years old.
Okay, so how many leagues are within that?
It's ones all week.
Okay, so four to 18 girls.
Right.
And so, what's your scheduling period? I mean, what's your seasons?
We run two seasons. We run a spring season, which usually starts...
Which, which are the marks, start to finish?
I'd say February to May.
February to May, and then what's the second one?
And then, the season to fall.
And so, so June to August, October?
August to February.
Oh, I'm sorry, October, okay. What are specifically the issues on, you do the scheduling. Okay, so what are the issues on the scheduling with the university, with Select? Are they, what are the issues there? Are there issues?
Select is secondary to OJSA. Our rec girls are our first concern.
Okay.
Select is just there.
Well, we're rec league, we're responsible actually for rec girls first. So, that's what we do, you know, that's our priority.
And, okay, so like examples.
If, if, you can speak freely, right? There's, there's no judgment, we, we just need to know what the issues are.
Like, so here's an example. Our games always start 6:30 or 8 o'clock. That's both seasons, that's our game times.
Okay.
And so, in the past, it's been, oh, 5 o'clock, they might be, UTPB wouldn't have practice, which I understand, no big deal. They might be off the field by 5, 5:30. It's time for the gentlemen to mark our fields, drag our fields, get prepared for a game, it starts at 6:30. And there's been a few different back and forths about that little gap. And nobody cares, nobody cares about the 6:30 games.
The UTPB coaches specifically told me she doesn't want our league using her field. She doesn't want practicing upon it, she doesn't want it using her game. We use it her field more than any others. Her, we use her field more than any others. And it's not, you know, the 18